I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any minutes or reports received and filed?
Um, yes, I have the treasurer's September 2024 reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I've got a solid waste management district grant meeting with the city this afternoon. And then there's the burn building open house at Hyde Park from 2:30 to 4:00. I forget, how much did we put in on the offer money? Was it 300?
I think it was 500.
Yes.
We get it to half a million on it?
We increased it.
We did increase it.
We increased it.
That's a good project. Try to get out there. I just got the email on that yesterday.
I did too yesterday afternoon, so.
Still trying to make it out there. Sunday, there's a blur of project graduation barbecue. I think that's about it till next week.
My calendar has today, mid-mo public housing agency board meeting. Wednesday, mid-mo regional planning commission meeting. Thursday, we have a commission meeting on Thursday, right?
Yes.
On to cover a specific item on insurance. Friday, Missouri Department of Economic Development broadband stakeholder update. And Saturday, Russellville ribbon cutting at the city park where they use some ARPA money to have pickleball, among other things, at Russellville, Saturday.
I have a lot. Today, the USS Jefferson City submarine committee meeting. Wednesday, yeah, the mid-mo RPCS and A and B meeting. Thursday, I've got a, we've got a commissioner and I, I've got a historic city of Jefferson Sundays and conventions meeting. And I'm gonna try to run that to the fire tower. Friday, the leadership forum. And then I have a meeting with President James Bishop, James and Bishop Denti of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Southern District. John Cott? It's kind of interesting. Saturday, I've got an Naval Sea Cadet awards ceremony. Sunday, West Valley Historical Society. Tuesday morning, the meeting will start at 10:00 a.m. because the Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce Board has their retreat and I'm in one of their, their first forms, so mark that the Tuesday meeting won't start until 10:00. And that is all I have.
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Thursday, this Thursday, uh, will be the second annual Coffee for Toys and it will kick off our 2024 Toys for Tots Toy Drive. Uh, so 20% of all purchases made at Scooter's Coffee during the day will be donated back to our toy drive. So for those of you who partake in coffee and other delicious drinks, please stop by and support us that day.
Do you want to put it on your tab and we'll pay back?
That's fine. Yes, yes, sounds good. Yes.
Yeah, Christmas will be here before you know it.
Correct.
Okay, uh, we've got all that. Presentation from staff consultants invited guests, Carl Malone Steck, election frauds at length. When we keep it to...
Sure. Oh, you want me to push that?
10 minutes, 40 minutes? What do you think?
Uh, no, I, how about five minutes, please?
So you may remember a couple of years ago, we talked about Jeff O'Donnell, the lone raccoon. He has asked people across the country to distribute these to public officials.
You might take closer to that.
I'm almost done here.
You don't have their microphone.
Where is it?
Well, it's here, but it's only here in December, okay.
So anyway, that's all I wanted to do today was make sure, got on the record that you were presented with a very informative study of how corruption starts and our voting roles, our, our roles that are open in these offices. Steve probably knows about all this already, but anyway, Debbie, if you'll take a quick picture, if you hold your CDs up that you receive them, thank you so much. And we'll have it in your library, so if these IT guys want to review it, thank you for the time on your agenda. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Okay.
Are you gonna need a copy for your minutes?
I can put one in there, but.
Okay. Well, if you need a borrow or whatever.
Okay.
Just so you all got.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you watch every minute, make sure you know all of it?
Okay.
And then we can get it to others' office to release whatever.
Okay, you have any additional comments? Okay, bids and contracts, approval of county aid road trust agreement with Missouri Department of Conservation.
Okay, this is our yearly agreement that we do with Conservation Department and the CART or the County Aid Road Trust provides funding for maintenance of county roads and specific roads of service, conservation grounds or properties. So Aaron Law handles this program for us and he can explain a little bit about the roads and the amounts that we can receive for that and what we do.
So there's six, there's six roads in Cole County that serve Missouri conservation areas. It comes up to be 7.74 miles and the county, the conservation will reimburse the county that a certain amount of rock for those roads if we apply that to those roads. So I guess I think we've done it the last three years and it seems to go, work pretty well with them, so.
It amounts to, up to $28,443.97. So that's a pretty good amount of money to help maintain our roads, especially ones that conservation uses to get to their property. So it's a good program and we're lucky to be able to take advantage of it. So, any questions?
Where are the four?
Uh, there's six.
Okay, six, I'm sorry.
There's Scott Road, Claywell Road, Dawson Road, Clyburn Road. Are those all the same? The Scrivener Road?
That's all part of the Scrivener Road Conservation Area, Clyburn Road. Actually, Claywell, Clyburn and Dawson are all part of the Scrivener Conservation Area out there.
Okay. And then Bird Haven Road, that's off the kind of northwest of Centertown and there's a, it's the nature area there. And then Monotop Creek Road, just a little small park, just way up north, almost in Monotop County that serves the Marion bottles.
Six roads within three locations. Is that what it amounts to?
Three general areas, yeah.
General areas, okay.
Yeah, because I guess Scott Road, Scott Road also serves the Scrivener Road Conservation Area, so.
That's a little over seven miles.
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost eight miles.
None of it's down Osage City area?
No, because that's a, the levy's maintained by the Conservation Department, so we don't maintain the levy at all down there.
Okay.
Still in your area.
I know, but I was thinking that we maintain some of that and then it hit Osage County and then it hit back to Cole County, so it's always.
Where the pavement stops as it kind of comes up on the levy, we stop.
Where the pavement ends.
Yeah, where, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
So we would recommend approval of this agreement. And Aaron, remind me, this, this is for the 2025 year, right?
2020, end of 2024 and 2025 for the conservation.
So as soon as it's approved, we can start submitting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Up until, I think we have to have everything submitted by May, like towards the end of May of next year is when we have to have all of our receipts turned in.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve and sign the county aid road trust agreement with Missouri Department of Conservation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Approval of blinds purchase, treasures and auditors new office.
Geez, y'all had a desk and chairs and now blinds.
I know, and you believe of all the nerve.
Yeah, saw this one coming.
Kick us out of our office when we want a few, few straggling items.
Did you guys get a copy?
If you guys want copies of it, it's $600 from Scruggs Lumber. They, the quotes that include all the installation and delivery and everything. Uh, we also contacted Lowe's just to get a price comparison, but they never got back to us with quotes. And Scruggs was what was recommended by the accounting purchasing agent anyway, so we would ask for approval of the blinds for the treasurer and auditor's shared office.
Uh, yeah, I'm good with that. I knew they were going, some kind of privacy blinds in there or something, so, and these are reasonable.
Eric, do you want your name on the marquee out front?
Yeah, I guess though I need to quit being paranoid, don't I?
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe it'd say Cole County dash treasurer dash auditor or something.
It's fine. Yeah, we can look at that.
Who does that by that?
Uh, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah, it would be on that, the marquee that lists all the tenants.
Right. Yeah, my initial concern, Harry, was, you know, to put the treasurer's title out there on the street might catch somebody's attention, but I'm sure it always is one. And the sheriff said he's gonna install a, or have installed, excuse me.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to Brian right now about getting the panic, the panic button door there for the auditor's office and treasures. I was gonna bring it up to him afterwards though, so I don't know what all that would, would have to do, so. We could just give them guns.
I'll use them. That's great, thanks.
I'm sorry, this is one thing after another.
Oh, no, yeah.
I'll just bring in that there is a plaque on the door too that we may want to take down and put a different plaque if you want.
Keep the door locked and then we'll give you a clock.
Oh, you're adding the door.
A clock? A clock, okay.
Does it have?
A clock.
Everyone, you throw at them.
Exactly. What are we on a clock for?
Ron Dawson did say he would put a, like just a generic plaque on there that just has the room number. He'll handle that for us, but if we want something that has our name or something, that's obviously.
You want us to take care of that with Ron? The marquee and the door signs, we'll be happy to do. And I'll coordinate with the, Mark will want to make sure the auditor's first, so that's okay with me.
A.
A.
A before T.
Who does the maintenance? I forget. We talked about that. Do we do the cleaning and trash and, or do they?
We will do trash and door, and inside. Brian does the halls, the bathrooms, everything else, so.
And I have a vacuum cleaner, uh, on, on hold at home just in case somebody drops the ball.
Okay, I was just thinking about that too.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of blinds and installation with Scruggs Lumber at a, a scheduled cost of $600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Did you need this back?
No, I, thank you though.
Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
I don't think there's any.
Oh, Mark, that's right there due this Friday. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, no.
There's nothing approved, sorry, nothing for you to approve this week.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark.
Approval of 2025 holidays.
Okay, well, the state came out with their approved holidays for the year 2025. I do have option, currently we have two different holiday schedules. We have one for EMS and we have one for all the other county.
Did you email these to me? I'm sorry.
I don't know if we did or not. Sorry. Are they out there on the stand right?
Oh, hold on, let me look. It might be out there, I'm sorry.
But EMS is asking us to wait on approving their holidays because they have something in the works for their next year's budget, but they want to see if that gets approved first before they approve their holidays, if that's, so all I'm here to do is the rest of the county employees. It helps with other departments scheduling out stuff into next year if they know what a holiday is there's gonna be. So that's why we're doing it now, of course. I do have option A and option B for you. If you remember, a few years back, the county commission did get rid of two holidays that we had and offered a floating holiday. So we're asking, and that's exactly what's in option A, is continue on the way we have been doing. Option B is to add back in Truman's birthday and keep the floating holiday. So that puts us back in the field that we were many years ago with the number of holidays that we had. So it's really up to you guys. I, we did look at the states and then, you know, the state always kind of adds holidays in theirs as things happen, so they're not really on their list, like the day after Thanksgiving or like, depending on when Christmas falls, you know, they kind of add holidays, so we don't have those kind of things. But we did add the day after Thanksgiving in here.
We added it or it's already?
It's been there for.
It's been there.
All right, so what, what, you have the, the state 2025 holidays.
Yes.
Where would the counties differ?
Where would the county differ?
One of the president's.
What is the difference between those two? Under, under?
It was not, it was not attached to the.
Oh, it wasn't?
Under option A, which would be a continuation of what we've done in '24, do the same thing in '25, how does that differ from the state?
Uh, one holiday, well, actually two holidays short right now, Truman's and Lincoln. Yeah.
But you have a floating holiday.
Yes, you did add a floating holiday that make up for the, one of those two, if that makes sense.
Okay, so we, there's really about three things different than the state. Lincoln, Truman and the floater.
Yes.
Okay.
And the floater.
Technically, we add the day after Thanksgiving to ours. That's never on the state's official holiday calendar, but the governor pretty much always adds it.
So we added it a few years ago because we do it every year, so it makes sense to let people go ahead and plan, know they're gonna be off that day.
It's always been on our official holidays, yeah. It's never been on the state's official holiday, but.
So we got option A.
Yes.
Same as it is now. Option B with Truman.
Yes.
Option C could be with Truman, but no floating holiday. You can trade that. And I know there are people that say they do wish we had the same days as the state, which I would too, because they get like every day off, but, um, if you want to trade those.
I would be good with not to be add Truman.
I'm okay adding Truman, but then let's take away the personal day and, because that personal day, we took a holiday away, I don't know, it's been several years ago, might have been before both your times, and we took it away and we added just a personal day.
Well, we took two away and gave them a personal day. So even if you take the floating away and give Truman, you're still to the same number of days, if that makes sense.
I just, I'm just now seeing, so I can't say it is or isn't, so.
Yeah.
I'd be fine adding Truman day and getting rid of the personal day. You've still got the same amount of days as we have now then, so. If you want to see that. I mean, we were figuring out how many days off we get each year with the holidays plus your annual leave, plus your sick leave, plus weekends. There's a lot of.
Do we get off weekends?
Brian doesn't. What's this about weekends?
It's actually added to vacation, so.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
And you have to be here one, one to receive that floating holiday in your vacation pool. That's how we've always handled it. I mean, that's how the court orders stay.
I'm kind of partial to Truman.
There you go, Harry. I have to say the city is off that day and the state is off that day.
No, the city does work one.
I, I was gonna, I was gonna admit that.
That's not.
Yeah, the city.
They need a vacation that's seven years ago. Exchange for salary bonds.
Yeah. No, so I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that we make people work on Truman. I'm a class day, because that's a February holiday, so.
And I'm sorry, since I don't have those out there, if you want me to bring it up next week, I can. It's up to you.
I'll make a motion to adopt a holiday schedule that is the same as this year except for adding Truman and deleting the floater.
Think that's what I was looking, second.
Okay. That's what I said.
Any other discussion?
Let's make sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So how many days do we have now?
Well, that didn't gain us anything.
No, it didn't gain.
No, how many do we have?
You basically took the floater.
Okay, it was a question that is answered with a number.
One, two, three, four, five? We'll count, I don't know, I don't want to count.
It's 12, isn't it?
Do this, the number B.
Because, I mean, you're saying that it gives us as many as we had before, but in 2000, I'm looking at the 2011 holidays, we had 10 holidays. Two, four, six, eight, 10, counting the day after Thanksgiving day, so that wasn't.
At what year was that?
Eleven.
2000, would have been 2011, something.
Well, yeah, because Juneteenth came into the picture last year or the year before.
I understand.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that.
Thirteen, there's thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
It's thirteen now. We had 10 in 2011. That's just the one that I pulled up.
Okay.
So, so we do have three more days than we used to.
Wait, so we approved?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just trying not to be too stingy, but at the same.
Yeah, you are.
I'm gonna have to.
No, it's not that. We gotta wait till we get past Thanksgiving to be.
I'm gonna have to rewrite this because the floater is in this wording.
We have to wait until the Dallas Cowboys have a chance in the Super Bowl to give that note. And that's gonna be a long time.
That could be a while.
2039.
This could be a while. Wait, there's always a chance. It's just like a snowball's chance.
Okay. Well, I'll definitely get that floater out of there and then I'll send it around to be signed, if that's all right, since they've already approved it.
And were we, were we tabling discussions prior to?
I don't know. We have a gentleman that just maybe showed up for that.
I was here if you were having a discussion. I was here to hear your discussion.
I thought you said we was gonna table that, right?
Yes.
Yes, we're gonna table this, Judge, I'm sorry. Have a cup of coffee.
Really good day to do it. My other case went off.
Okay. Okay, moving on. EMS command vehicle for 2025.
Yeah, good morning.
Morning.
So this kind of evolved rather rapidly. As you're aware, the ability to obtain public safety vehicles has been haphazard at best. We know that we wanted to look at getting another vehicle for 2025 to replace a 2019 model that has over 100,000 miles on it. I reached out to Don Brown's Chevrolet to try and secure that vehicle off a state contract and they said, well, state contract's open now and we're planning on delivering those vehicles in January, so is there any way that you could get this approved and move forward? One of the things that we talked about with this project was we are continuing to receive opioid settlement money and that money has some pretty large restrictions on it. However, there are two provisions in there that allow the purchase of mobile units to provide mobile healthcare. This vehicle falls right into both of those categories, so we do believe that it's an appropriate expenditure of those funds. So, since this is moving rapidly, I do have a quote here and just wanted to put that on your radar and if you were okay with proceeding with that project out of those funds, we can get the vehicle ordered and have it here in January and then I will bring back some future quotes for the upfitting and emergency package of that vehicle. So the quote is for $53,386 and that's for a 2025 Chevy Tahoe four-wheel drive pursuit model.
So you're proposing using it just out of opioid funds to buy it upfront and then get it from EMS funds?
Uh, no, I think the, the, the goal of the project would be to purchase it with opioid money.
Is that a once a year, twice a year? There's a couple of different opioid funds that are pushing our money already.
Well, we keep getting, we keep getting settlement money.
Right.
And as far as, some of them are paid out over three years, some of them are paying out over a dozen years. So it's just an ongoing payment on the settlement and, and there, there are still other, other defendants out there that haven't settled yet or anything. So we're gonna continue to get more. And the settlement exhibit that has all the permitted uses, I gave a copy of that to Eric, Toby, John and Judge Freedom has one, so that they can go through and see.
Right.
What would apply.
It's, I haven't kept up with the numbers that have come in calendar.
We have a lot of money this year. We got a couple hundred thousand this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
We had a big amount.
Total, so far to date, we received 321,000.
This calendar year?
No, since it started.
Cumulative, okay.
Since '22, actually.
And how much of that have we spent?
You've obligated.
Or obligated.
Actually.
Well, Debbie, you and I looked at that the other day and it was just a little under 250,000.
Right. Yes, that hasn't been obligated.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be right.
There's still, there's still other, I think Walmart now is just kind of being, close to settling, so there, there will be other entities.
I understand. I just wanted to get a, kind of a broad look at how much we've received, how much have we spent that we don't spend more than we received, so we're good.
Good reviews, it's, it's.
It's so restrictive that if you have anything that would fit, like Eric, they're moving into dressing overdoses, it's a category.
So now is this a vehicle we could maybe kind of strip and, you know, how we gave the public administrator one of the sheriff's vehicles that could be.
Yeah, yeah, so the, the vehicles that's coming out of service would have all of the emergency equipment removed from it, which is pretty much into life anyway. And then the vehicle can be either given to another county department or surplus.
Okay. EMS alone has, before this, has used about 53,000.
That's dispatch.
Dispatch, radios, yes, console, yeah.
It was dispatching, not, not radio, it was dispatching.
What's the definition of a command vehicle?
Uh, so it's just a vehicle that one of our chief officers utilizes to respond to emergencies quickly, you know, not in ambulance.
Right.
So the, the purpose of this is actually to be more mobile, quicker to arrive on scene and start some of those interventions, you know, to address life-threatening emergencies.
I see that responding to a lot of calls.
What else have we used any of that opioid money on?
The list is, we, you had set aside 20,400 for the Prender family centers. It's called SAAF program. Toby would have to explain more of that, but it's been paying attorneys, a lot of attorneys for a different program that they, her and the judge came in here and explained to you guys. I don't remember, forget what that stands for. And then again, 53,000 for EMS. It was a lot of the dispatching and CAD system and that he presented to you guys a while back.
I mean, I just.
There were just those two projects.
Pretty restricted use, but EMS also has its own funding, so I was just trying to see if there's any other places that we needed or could use it, so.
I can send you all the exhibit that has the permitted uses.
I think we got it. I think it was emailed somewhere along, maybe with one of.
And that same, that same format is on the state reporting website, so our use has to match exactly a category for there because every January I have to report expenditures.
And I'll send you the spreadsheet.
I think since we have the need, we have the funds, the timing is, is pretty important with respect to getting a vehicle. If we pass now, we didn't know when the window opens again, probably, right?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, to, to kind of address some of Jeff's concerns is, you know, the restrictiveness, you know, and I don't know how much research and Toby had, has left, but there, there's just not a lot of openings that I see for use of these funds from, from county type business. You know, if you want to allocate those funds to other community ventures, that's probably where, you know, you can find more uses for it. However. However, if we're going to use this to fund county projects, it really does come down to very select things that we do, select things that Toby does, and, and maybe, you know, just a few things that the sheriff does, but, you know, if we were to talk about buying a vehicle for patrol or for, you know, prisoner transport or something like that, that doesn't meet the needs because it has to be able to provide mobile healthcare, so it is pretty restrictive, so, and I think it's a good fit. As, as Jeff said, you know, we can look at doing it out of sales tax, but that wasn't something that we had planned in budget this year, so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to continue the conversation or, you know, whatever direction you want me to go.
I'm fine going ahead.
I think it's a good use of that money, you know, we're coming up with more and more different drugs, pain, opium now.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the purchase of an EMS command vehicle from Don Brown, using opioid settlement proceeds, and the price of the vehicle, the quote is fifty-three thousand, three eighty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it is the Sheriff Wheeler Show.
Thank you, favor which?
Sheriff, to discuss Interpol system change.
So recently, within the last two years, we swapped everything over to New World. We found that New World is lacking in the corrections side of it for us, so I'm gonna, I wanna move back to Interpol, Huber Associates, for the corrections module and for civil module. In the long run, it's gonna save us about thirty thousand dollars a year. To switch over to Interpol, you get the license going again and all that, it's gonna cost us fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars upfront, and then it'll be thirty-two thousand dollars a year after that. And that will come out in contingency.
Okay, be good, Sheriff thought maybe for the meeting, so...
So how, how does that affect the project that we have going on with Tyler and the ARPA projects?
Right, so like I put in that email, the thirty-two thousand that's still sitting out there, that can be released back to, to be used elsewhere with the, with the money. The money that we have sitting in Tyler as a credit, that's encumbered already, we can just use that money to pay my maintenance for twenty twenty-five.
Are you sure we're done with the contract with Tyler?
I, I think he's done, and I think I'm done, I mean, there's, there's no more bills out there that I know of. And there's probably gonna be another credit coming, because once we, once I send him a thirty-day notice, then they'll, they'll stop it at that point, it won't finish out the year, and then they'll reimburse us any money that we're, that there's owed to us.
And Mark, we're gonna have to figure out the logistics of keeping that money in ARPA to pay maintenance for ARPA projects, so we need to just figure that all out.
No, because the ARPA money's already been spent, that's why Tyler has a credit, so that money's already been spent, so the credit that we have with Tyler, yes, can just be utilized with Tyler, so we don't even have to, it won't come, it's already out of the ARPA.
But when my auditors come in and they see a big credit that we left in ARPA, they're gonna wanna see what did, where did that money come back in at, and it's not coming back in there, right, you're gonna use it somewhere else, so...
Right.
I just gotta make sure that...
Right, it'll be utilized for that project still, but it's just gonna be in a different manner.
Does that clear that up for you?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Because I see where you're, I see where you're coming from.
The fact that there's a, a credit sitting there is because we've sent ARPA money over there and not gonna get something with it, so there's a credit, so that credit can come back and be used somewhere else. She's got some very strict ARPA rules to live by, and so she's gonna tap dance through all the rules.
Right, and, and the reason why we have the credit is because once we got and implemented the system, we didn't do the data migration, and that saved us the, whatever the amount is for the credit, that's why they went ahead and credited, gave us the money back, 'cause it didn't work.
Now, are you saying we're gonna have more credit coming back from that?
Yeah, and I'm not sure how much that will be. Clear as mud?
Yeah.
So will we actually get that cash back from that? That's my question.
No.
Well, no, it's gonna be applied against some other expenditure.
Applied against some other future-related project that we're gonna continue to, that ARPA money will be used?
Well, it'll fund my maintenance agreement for twenty twenty-five. So we'll put that, 'cause I think it's a sixty, sixty-two thousand dollars a year, so the fifty-five thousand we have in credit right now, we'll just push that towards my maintenance agreement for next year, and so that way, it should, and it should, it's emptied out, and we should, we should be able to find that out pretty quick, after I cancel it, so I, I, but I gotta give them thirty days' notice, and we're not, until I get all this worked out, we're not ready to move forward on that.
So to be encumbered in time, but we may not write a check until next year for the maintenance, so does that work?
Well, I think the maintenance will be covered, I mean, I think we can pay the maintenance as soon as I find out how much the extra credit is.
That would be better, if we can get it all cleaned up before the end of the year.
I think it could be, it should be done by, like, we should know by December first.
'Cause I think I understand where you were coming from.
Oh, no, I ain't know exactly what you were talking about.
Talking about that, just 'cause we get a credit doesn't mean we just get to spend that, however, we self-document it.
Well, it'll still be on that project, it'll still be on New World.
Okay, so, just, I guess, make sure before December thirty-first?
Yeah.
Okay. So then on this maintenance, then, are we, this is a different maintenance than we were just talking about?
Right, that's maintenance with Interpol with Huber Associates.
So the Interpol maintenance for two thousand and twenty-six, is that gonna be a budget?
Yes.
Thing for next year, so today we're just approving the one-time fifty-six, eight, forty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Clear as mud to everybody?
Yes.
You make the motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Interpol system change with one-time cost of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, and it's Interpol by Huber Associates.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Interpol server OS upgrade.
So in order for us to switch over to Interpol, we have to upgrade our server, our current server, the OS system, it needs to be upgraded. That's gonna cost five thousand, four hundred and six dollars and seventy-two cents, I have this in my pocket currently, we'll be able to pay for that. And this, this was approved by Brian.
Oh, there's one, I got a number here on the over-under, Brian being thrown under the bus.
I'm, I'm just warming up.
Now, this is his show, we got, we got, we got two more.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's part of this package, so...
I'll make a motion to pay the billing on the Interpol OS upgrade, Microsoft server twenty twenty-three standard, the amount is five thousand, four oh six point seven two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Sheriff, continue, we're doing the, let's see, ES Chat discussion.
So ES Chat is, is a way to be able to put our Moswin radio channel on our phones, it helps with command staff as well as the three SROs, or the four SROs. Currently, our SROs in the schools, the radios don't work very well inside the building because of the Moswin system, so this would actually put it on their phone, so they'd be able to monitor the radio channel and actually transmit also from anywhere, and it helps us with command staff, this was actually brought to our attention by EMS, they've been using it for a while, it's very, it works very well, so, it would be the seven thousand, I don't remember what it was.
Seventy-seven and sixty-five cents.
Yeah, that would be paid out of contingency, and then after that, it's a thousand dollars a year for maintenance, a little over a thousand.
And that's for twenty, that twenty licenses?
Yes, sir.
So you got the SROs, and then who else, who's the other twenty?
So the SROs, all of command staff, and then we would go down the line from there.
Okay.
And Brian said for him to go along with this, he wants one of the licenses, so we'd probably put Brian on it, too.
I, I keep always forgetting.
There's number two getting thrown under the bus.
He's got on a vehicle, too, then, you realize that?
Uh, EMS is coming up with one here pretty soon.
I didn't know that was in play until just now. No, we're part of your physical activity.
Well, he's on call, he's on call twenty-four hours a day.
I agree.
We, we, that'd be a nice Tahoe for him to have.
Hard, hard pass on the vehicle. All right, you ready, then? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the ES Chat, and that's upfront cost of seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents with the yearly maintenance of one thousand ninety-six dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, and finally, the changing the Sheriff's Department vehicle policy.
So we have six open road positions right now, we have none in the hopper at this time to be able to even hire. We have heard from several entities or several people around us, or some entities, too, and I decided to do this, but I won't say what that is, 'cause this is a family deal, but some of, some of the people don't wanna move because, number one, there's no housing here, and number two, their kids are already settled, so what my proposal is, we already have a thirty-minute callback time, I'm gonna move that to a forty-five-minute callback time to the Sheriff's Department, and I wanna allow them to take marked units outside the county. So that means we could see, you could see a marked unit as far as forty-five minutes from three fifty East High Street, so it could be Ashland, parts of Columbia, but we're paying a little bit of gas and oil, but if it gets us more people to come work for us, I think it's the next step that we need to do for recruiting.
So you're saying surrounding counties are already doing it as well?
Surrounding counties are already doing it, I've got...
So, it's not...
Osage County, there's a, there's a kid right next to me, I put a card in his under, when you live around, I walk by there, but he, he's got one here, Boone County's got one living here, Montauk County has one living here, so...
Yeah, well, we talked about that earlier, that's what I was thinking, too, you know, if somebody doesn't wanna come here, but, you know, they've got their roots maybe just across the river, and they're gonna be here faster than somebody that we have them living in Eugene.
Right.
If you get down Eugene Enley, you're, you're a good little click away already there.
Right.
It's bad enough if you're on the other side of town, just trying to make it down here, so I'm fine with trying that and seeing if that works, I think it's, you know, one creative way, I've seen other...
Try it for a year, and then af- after a year, if it's really not helping us all that much, maybe we revisit it, but I'd like to, I'd like to go ahead and do it for, starting pretty soon.
Where were we at before we did the salary adjustments, at twelve empty spots?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so we've, we've made some moves on that.
We've made some good progress, jailers have really, we've really done a real good job at recruiting, retaining is still an effort, but recruiting is very good, I think we're, I wanna say we're four down in the jail right now, we were, we hired two, and then two left, so, I mean, I think we're at, I think we're at four vacancies, which is the closest we've ever been to being full.
I'm gonna put the retainage on you, that's, we'll get, we'll get them in the door with some salary adjustments, so...
Bug stops here, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with trying it out, especially with the housing, the way it is around here, I, it's hard to find anything, even, you know, first-time buyers, for sure, so...
Well, schools, you're right, you know, your children are going to school, you have to yank them out of that school district that leaves their friends in.
I approve the whole thing.
It makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we need a motion to change the policy, or is this an internal thing, or...
It's an internal thing.
Yeah, it's internal, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of what's going on, so that if you start getting phone calls about a patrol car sitting in Ashland, you know why, and also hopefully News Tribune picks up and puts an article out, and we get to hire five more people because of that.
Kaylee will do that, she's good.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with trying it, so...
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and we are doing discussion of the RIN trust park, gentlemen, if you would wanna come on.
Morning, Mark.
Morning.
I don't know, who wants to start this off, we add this to the agenda, because we talked about the Junior RIN, had some land that he was wanting to donate to the county for a park, and we really kinda decided we didn't have money to put into it, and we said, "Thank you, but no thank you at this time," and...
It was, was not just a minor point, it was not a donation of the land, it was a very reasonable lease of the land, like a buck a year, but it didn't actually...
Ninety-nine year lease.
The, uh, there was no title change to this, to be owned by the county, but just minor difference.
So, since then, it went through its court process and was sent back to the trustees, let them figure out what they wanted to do with it under the trust agreement. Since then, we've got some more information available, so we wanted to discuss this, and I've got a copy of the First Amendment to the, the trust agreement, I think you all have it, too, and then you'll need a copy of it, Don, we can get you a copy. Okay. So, there's just some stuff that came up that we didn't know about that may change things, and see if we wanna pursue this, part of it being that there would possibly be some money for the development of the Lawrence J. RIN Junior Memorial Park and subcession to, and endowment for the future maintenance of said park, so I guess we need to talk about, is this something we want to pursue, possibly go talk to the trustees, Author Bank, and say, "Hey, you know, we kinda changed our mind with some new information, how do we wanna go about this?" So, the way it sounds, this is something that Junior really wanted.
Yeah.
And so we'd like to try to see if we can make it happen, yeah.
I'll try to do my best not to get a motion. I do feel that, you know, because of Lawrence's desire to see the, see the park, I think it's, I think it would be wise to share with you just a little bit of history, a little bit more of, you know, who Lawrence RIN was and his desires for that, and, you know, as smart as I was riding through the cows, kinda reflecting on him, that's his hat. He, he, every time he went to town, he had it on, I don't care if he went to Hy-Vee at six-thirty in the morning, he was dressed up with that hat on. Well, Lawrence RIN Junior was a World War II veteran, and when he got home from the war, he was a, he was a young man, that, his dad had some land there on Route T, which is the house side, and, you know, there's a lot of Colt County history here, when you really think about it, and when you know the stories. Mr. Wade, which Wade Road was named after, owned that farm, which is now, you know, in Lawrence's name and has the lake on it, and Junior was a scrapping, hard-working young man, and Mr. Wade wanted to see Junior have that farm, and Junior, he come to him and went and bought, Junior said, "Well, I ain't got no money." Well, he had an uncle, and I can't remember what shepherdly it was.
No, Van Peper.
Van Peper, okay, well, Junior's mother was a shepherd, and so the Van Peppers and shepherdlies, and Mr. Wade had already talked to Van Peper and said he'd loan him the money, and I'll try to hustle it up here, but the farm was growed up, had a lot of erosion, ditches, deep ditches, a lot of brush, briars, you know, kinda growed up, and so Junior RIN got the farm, cleaned it up, built terraces, if anybody's ever been there, he, he made, made the entire piece of property into a showplace, and probably one of the, as he would say, the nicest farm in Colt County, I would challenge you, give him a hard time about that, but he was proud of it, but he worked his tail off. Him and his wife, you know, I, I say a couple stories, and I'll try to keep moving here, but I feel it's important that you guys know this couple, his wife was married, she was twelve years older than him, this was, back in those days, it was square bailing, and I don't know, there's a history of ten thousand square bales laying down, and I don't know how many of you in this room have ever hauled square bales, but ten thousand square bales is a bunch, and he had, the penitentiary would contact Junior, 'cause they had their farm going out there on one seventy-nine, and they would purchase hay from Junior, so the convicts would come over and haul hay, and would ask permission if, if Junior, if he was okay with letting them swim in the lake. Just giving you a small example of some of the history here, Kurt Hysinger lives across the street, he, his grandpa was a Wade, he's, you know, has a tie here, this whole thing is really a Colt County thing. One of the things I think about, there's not very men that accumulate in a state like this that don't have children, so when somebody passes away, they hand it down to their kids, we don't never really hear much about it, because it went to their kids and they split it up and do whatever they're gonna do, but this World War II veteran, hard-working SOB, registered Pearl Hurfords, he's had dignitaries from the University of Missouri, Chi- from China, Japan, all at his facilities, the university would wanna come down and see his operation as a model of what, you know, they were trying to put out there, and, you know, Junior was a smart, smart guy, there's... There's just, there's a lot of history, and I could share more, but the bottom line is, that old man accumulated over four million dollars worth of stocks, bonds, and cash when he passed away. Plus a farm that appraised for over two million dollars. And I, and when you look at this trust, when I look at the affidavit that I recently got a copy of, that the attorney for Hawthorne Bank makes reference to, it's obvious that he didn't care whether it was a, the park, or college funds, et cetera. Well, I can tell you, if you look at that document, the original trust, for nineteen years, that trust said nothing but a park, period. No, no language of what ifs in it. And I, me and Junior, while working cattle and fixing fences, would occasionally talk about this stuff, and I'm the one that planted the seed. Junior, what are you going to do if the county doesn't want the park? If they feel there's a liability issue there, or whatever it is? And I said, "Maybe you ought to do, do something, have a backup plan, you know, in case they, they don't want it." Well, of course, when I asked him, "What are you going to do if they don't do what you said you're going to do?" My God, that better, never even crossed his mind that you guys wouldn't do what he wanted done. And, so he went and had, asked to have it added, which I gave him the idea of possibility of college funds, or something like that, you know, something towards agriculture, things that meant something to him. So it was only then, in two thousand nineteen, two years before he passed away, that it was added, the college funds, or, you know, some other options there. But his priority was that, that, that the citizens of Colt County, if you read the original trust, was to be able to enjoy that piece of property. And he had the resources to not only develop it, but also to maintain it, which if you read the language, it says that. Now, and what troubles me, or one of the few, the few things that troubled me, is that when John Keebler prepared a lot of that, and I'm not saying anything against John, but when I Googled John Keebler's name, uh, and when you Google that, it's got Hawthorne Bank attached to it. So, I've been in real estate for thirty-seven years, done a lot of contracts, attorneys involved in things, and attorneys help you think about the what ifs. And there was no, there was no help or guidance in that language. All they did was add the language and/or college funds. Well, Todd references that to, in this recent affidavit of giving them permission, but his wishes were for it to be a park, period. Now, he didn't want to have to pay for the whole thing. He wanted you guys to put a little skin in the game. And I will tell you, at one time, it was totally going to be deeded to you, period. And I'm the one that challenged him on that, to say, "What if they don't do what you wanted to do?" So, he did change it to where it was a long-term lease for a dollar, and he's basically giving it to you. But if you didn't do what he had, then the trust would have the authority to be able to, you know, hold you accountable. So, when we came here in November, when you guys were first made aware that Mr. Renn was wanting to give this property to you for a park, and Dan Renfro, the representative from Hawthorne Bank, you guys were made aware of it. And I remember then, you know, you guys, Jeff talking about, you guys really don't have much of a park budget. And, you know, we didn't know how we were going to do it, but you guys, I could tell, I mean, you guys were, were appreciative of what Mr. Renn was, was willing to do here. And, but Dan made no mention of availability of funds, that Junior had any money to help pay for this. And when we left here that day in the elevator, I called him out on it. And I, and I, I said, "How come you never told him that Junior had money to help with this?" "Well, we don't want to tell him all that. They think he's got money. Then they'll just want us to, want him to pay for everything." So I, that was, you know, that was, I called him out on it, and that was how he answered me. Well, I never heard from him again about it, until just recently, when he said he had gotten authority through the courts that you guys didn't want the land, and that he went to the state of Missouri, and they didn't want the land to do the park. And so he had the right, you know, they have permission now to sell it and to get rid of it. And, you know, just to lay all the cards on the table. I'm a real estate agent, so he was offering, you know, wanted to talk to me about listing it. Well, I sent him a listing agreement. He wanted to cut my commission in half. And Junior had it in writing, and it, on the other side of the road, and it, it's in an addendum C, that Mark Knapp was to be the guy selling the farm. Well, he ended up selling it before he died, but he'd also told me that if the farm ever sold across the road, that I was to be the realtor. Michael, ain't that in writing? Because I don't know how many times you repeated it to me. And this guy didn't just say something randomly, drop hints. When he tells you something, you know exactly what he meant, and he'll make it clear, and he'll repeat it. And so I asked Dan about that, and he said, "Well, there's nothing in writing about that." So I was like, so I remember Junior had left me a copy of the trust, which I hadn't looked at. So I went out in the garage and dug my briefcase thing out, where I had all his funeral stuff, and, and got to looking at it, and, and on, as you guys see on this addendum, his intention was to pay for the development of this land, and not only the development of it, but the future maintenance of it. So, I got the thing, and, and so I reached out to you guys, I don't know if it's been a week or two weeks ago, with one specific question. And my specific question was, did Dan Renfro of Hawthorne Bank ever offer any money to help develop the prop- the property? And each one of you answered with a fast, prompt, "No," and absolutely no offer of sub- of, what's the word I'm looking for? Substitution, not substitution, but-
Subsidy.
Subsidy, to develop the farm. And I called each one of you, and got the same answer. And so, you know, that, that set, kind of, you know, it was like, "Man, that ain't right." And then I'm sitting there thinking, "Well, who holds the trust accountable?" You know, they're about to sell his farm, and he didn't lay all the cards on the table. And I didn't tell you guys at that time about that, because I didn't know if you knew, so I went and talked to John Landware. And he pulled up the case stuff, you know, the current stuff, and, of course, we talked about this, and, you know, he highlighted this stuff, and we talked about it. So I, uh, he printed off the stuff for me in his office last week, and I brought it, left a copy for each one of you. And then I went out, everybody was out, but I left a note for all of you, hopefully that the gal was going to have to call me. And I went out to Eric, wanted to make sure, because he was the, he was the voice that said, "We can't," you know, he was the one, his emails, what they based it on, that they were going to, you know, be able to sell the farm, and the county doesn't want it. Well, when I told Eric, he's like, "Well, this is a game changer, where this information wasn't given to us." And so, so guys, I, I'm upset about that. And, you know, from talking to John Landware, you know, I tried to, I asked Dan Renfro for a copy. In the trust, it makes mention that the beneficiaries can have, have the right to ask for copies of disbursements and records. When I asked for that to Dan, he told me I wasn't a beneficiary. I sent him a copy of a letter that I'd got from, from him. It says I'm a beneficiary, and it listed the people that, he left some chunk of change to, I don't know, for twelve or fifteen of us. And I was, I'm the first one on that list. And I said, "Well, according to your li- letter that you wrote me," I sent him a copy of it, says, "Well, I'm a beneficiary." Well, then he followed up saying that, "Since you were paid your, that benefit, you're no longer a beneficiary." Now, the way I understand it, you guys, the county of Cole, is the largest beneficiary of that trust. You should have been made aware of not only that document, but that there was funds to pay for the development of this property. In my opinion, I don't think there's a park in Colt County where we memorialize and put credit to men like Lawrence Renn, and the men of agriculture that are in Colt County. And I, I personally could picture, I, I see a pavilion or something, and I think there's somewhere in there, there should be a memorialization of Lawrence Renn and his wife. Gary can tell you, uh, there's many men that hauled hay for Junior. Everybody hauled hay for Junior when you're back in them days, and you're putting up ten thousand square bales at a time. But Mary was right in the middle of it, driving tractors and, and doing everything, raking hay and hauling wagons. I mean, this woman was twelve years older than him, but she was tough as nails. But guys, there's a history here of Colt County, and to me, you know, we, we got the guys on High Street, as I used to say to Junior, like, it troubled me that he would put the people on the High Street in charge of his estate. They don't know cattle. They don't know land. They don't know him. And they don't know, and they're not paying attention to his wishes. And I think there should be a memorialization of those kind of men. Again, we don't have that opportunity in most families, because they have kids. We never even hear these stories. It just goes on to the family. And since then, guys, there's nothing in it for me. The, the trust covers things that, it, it cannot be taken away from Hawthorne and given to me and Gary, or the rest of the heirs that were in that thing. It, 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 it's safe for the park, is number one. And until two thousand nineteen, that was it. No, no, no options. And so then, when he added that, the and/or the college funds, and then there's language to where ultimately it ends up that the trustee can give the, donate the money to charitable things of their choice. Now, when I tried to talk to Mr. Renfro, I also brought up four-H stuff. I don't know how many of you have ever been to the sales or auctions that are at Colt County Fair. Those kids worked their tails off, and it's a, it's a, a, it shows a part of society that's still working, willing to work their tails off. And, and my, my thoughts were, is that maybe we should do some stuff like that, if we're not going to do the park, but what we should have been doing this anyway, in addition to. Let's go out there and bid on some steers, and put it in the name of Lawrence Renn Junior. He wanted recognition, that's the bottom line. And the man, a World War II veteran that came from nothing, amassed what I call a pretty big pile, and that's what it was worth three years ago. And if you, you guys got money in the stock market, we all know that stuff's went up a bunch in the last two, three years. So I don't know unless Dan was a bad steward of that as well, hopefully it's worth even more. So just the income, the yearly income off of what he had, is a big deal. And, trying to think if there's anything else that, you know, again, I, I think about Lawrence Renn. I brought his hat, because this guy didn't put up with no crap. When he come, you'd have heard his boots clicking down the hall, and he meant business. He was a kind man, but he took care of business, and there was no fooling around. You did what he told you to do. Talking to Gary the other day, and he said, "I've been afraid of that man my whole life." And he wasn't a big guy, but he's just tough and full of grit, and I think he wanted to be, he wanted recognition. And I think that we should, as a county of Cole, and you all are in control of this, should memorialize the man and his estate, and the people of agriculture in Colt County, not just the boys on High Street.
Do you have anything, Gary?
I was just going to say, you're talking about the Pearl Hurfords, which he raised. He was the secretary of the Pearl Hurfords Association for years. He was also a judge at the Colt County Fair. He's a judge out there on cattle, so cattle was part of his, is his life. His wife was the same way. What he told me one time was that he wanted the park, period. He didn't want to sell the land. He wanted to keep the land in, basically, the Renn shepherdy name. And now they're talking about selling it without, to me, going through what they should be going down, you know? If the county doesn't want it, the state doesn't want it, Lincoln University hadn't been asked, University of Missouri, I don't think has been asked. You know, the man doesn't, all he wanted to do was have the park, and his wife wanted the park. That was his thing. The lakes are already out there. You're talking about, as far as I'm concerned, very minimal to get the thing serviced. There's two entrances, one off Wade Road and one off, I can't think of the name of the-
Route T, Wade Road, Nelson Road, it's got signage on three blacktop roads.
You know, the roads are, are not, the, the gates are there, the place is fenced in. The county's got the equipment. There's money in the account to pay for the gravel, paving, whatever the heck it takes, a little pavilion, put a little dock out there. You're not asking for, you know, Lake in the Ozarks thing. He wants the average person to go out there and fish a little bit. There's a lot of fish in the lake. He just want, you know, he wants his dream to come true. And I'm not going to badmouth Hawthorne Bank, if I don't need a freaking lawsuit, but obviously, in my opinion, humble opinion, they're not doing what his request is. If you talk to anybody that knew him, this is what the man wants, period, end of conversation. And for them selling it within, you know, three years, a little over three years, is that, they're not, you know, they're not pursuing what they should be doing. I don't even know, I don't even think they even know who's out on land. As far as I know, the, the person that leased it for his cattle is still there, and as far as I know, it was supposed to be all.
There were cattle there when we went and looked at it.
Well, they're not supposed to be, unless-
He's not been a good steward of the land either.
Has Sounday, has got a lease with Spec Brothers. I think Steck or Spec, whatever, has got it. That's who had it before. So, you know.
The lease, the lease was to expire at the end of twenty twenty-one, when Junior died. And so he was to tell them to get out, you know, if they hadn't moved, because we're going to make it a park. So he did that, but Steck didn't get the cattle out. The cattle are still there. When this conversation started, I had just recently drove by there and seen where it'd been brush hogged. And so I asked Dan, I said, "Well, I drove by the other day. I seen where it'd been brush hogged. Did you call somebody to brush hog it?" And quote his words, "Where I haven't called anybody to do anything over there." So that means to tell me in three, three and a half years, you haven't done anything to take care of that property. You haven't secured it, you haven't brush hogged it, you haven't ordered anybody to brush hog it. And I don't know if you know much about pasture land, but if we don't take care of stuff, it grows up and brushing briars. Now Chuck, because he stayed there, I'm not, I'm not really mad at Chuck, because if he wouldn't have been there, it wouldn't have got brush hogged at all. At least it is, did get clipped, and he didn't do a good job. Junior had a boot up his butt, because he didn't get the fence rows done right. There's brush growing up in what was a new fence five years ago, where Junior, when I was there, he made me, I did it. He'd have me get up there and, it's kind of make you pucker, because it's pretty steep. But, you know, we, we brush hogged right up to the fences, to where that brush didn't get growed up in the fences. So Dan ain't been a good steward of the land either, and done what he was supposed to. That's a whole nother subject, but I mean, you know, we're not here to hang nobody, but, by God, Lawrence Renn wanted a dang park, and the old son of a gun accumulated quite a bit of loot and land. And, and if you guys still don't want it, so be it, but then the cards need to be on the table. To me, that Hawthorne Bank trustee did not do his job and do what he was supposed to do. And I don't know who holds them accountable, but most important things do what Junior wanted. If any don't, I'm going to keep on climbing. Whether it's Attorney General, which I've already got a call into them, and then there's one document that references to the Missouri Department, that, the Banking Association in Goodstand regulated by the Missouri Division of Finance. I called there yesterday and left a message. Nobody's called me back. But I want to see the park, and I want to see what Junior Renn wanted. And the old man left me a little loop too. And I don't, again, I don't have anything interest, but I want with that old man what he wanted to be done. If you guys still say no, so be it. And they go and let the boys on High Street do what they want to do.
We had declined acceptance of it. Again, we didn't have anything about it. That is, that is terrorists. We want that. That, that's a bear. So, how, did he give enough money to, to level that off, or is that something-
Well, from me talking to John Landware, that can all be resentful.
Well, but it, it's-
That's, the joy of parks is that it's not all leveled land. I mean, it's Colt County in general. And I know that we made a decision, so we didn't want it, but that was without all the information, and now we have new information. I think it warrants revisiting it. I think Mr. Knapp has made a wonderful argument. I mean, for a World War II veteran, and we can even put a tribute out there to veterans. We could do a lot of neat stuff with this, that, that even says that there's money in there to help get the park up to par and to maintain it. So we can still put some skin in the game. I don't, I mean, we've got the equipment to do some of this work that we would need to do, and that could be our skin in the game, because we can do it a lot cheaper than somebody else hiring out to work. And I think it definitely warrants revisiting and looking into. I know when Bart, I don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago, when we first talked about it, I was surprised to find out that information, because it was not part of the original information we were presenting.
The full trust calls for an advisory committee, and I know that he verbally told me that I was, of course, I was going to be supposed to be the main person in that, and he also mentioned his nephews, Gary and Mike. But I, again, I asked for a copy. Evidently it wasn't in writing, or I'm sure Dan would have done it. But he did invite me to the first meeting, but once I called him out, I never heard another word, you know, when it came to releasing the information about having the funds to do it.
So, I mean, basically, you know, the, the court decision, I'm not sure how you'd go about changing that, but it's in the hands of the trustee, which is Hawthorne Bank right now. And if they want to make it a park, they should be able to make it into a park without having to even go back to court, because it's their decision. So if we go back to them and say, "Yeah, we're, we're interested. Let's sit down and talk about this now that we have some new information," it just, it seems like it would make sense.
So when we first learned of this, we met with you and, and the bank representative at, at commission meeting, and started to pursue, is this feasible for us to do? So we brought it to our park committee. Harry's a commission representative on that committee, and we talked about it more than once, but I know at, at one meeting, they specifically, you know, approved us pursuing this as a park. It came down to funding. We just, we tried. We tried to put together a way to make it happen. There just wasn't the money or the manpower to maintain it. And that's probably where the decision lied in, saying, "We just can't do it." And that's when we got back to the, to the banks, saying, "We just can't do this right now." And it, it all came down to money. With funding available to, to build out, and it can be a phased approach, or it can be all at once. Probably phased, just we don't want to get too in over our heads. If there's some funding to help maintain it, you know, that helps too. I did speak with one of the residents- I did speak with one of the residents out there about this concept. And the impression I got is that the neighbors would even help kind of take care of it and kind of watch after it. So I think you'd have maybe a community group out there that would assist in, I don't know, maintenance, possibly some maintenance, but at least you put a park out in the rural area like that, you may want to, people kind of watching over it, make sure.
Well, Kurt Heisinger, to me, you know, it, far as I'm concerned, advisory committee, I think, I'm going by Junior's wishes, would be Gary, but also think Kurt Heisinger. Kurt lives right across the street from the entrance that would go down to that lake. And it was his grandpa's. So I mean, he's got a tie to it, you know what I mean? And he's young enough still and he is a son to where this heritage thing of this piece of property and what it's all about and what it represents for Coal County, you know, I mean, we do have, we got some classy neighbors out there that all knew Junior and knew how it was. And they could continue to honor what Junior wanted. Like, I'm assuming you're talking about Kurt Heisinger, but yeah.
I'd like to see a list of the funding that, that is being offered.
Well, and that's, and you know, the trustee kind of has control of that, but I mean, he never disclosed to you anything, it sounds like.
It reads in here, the purpose of the trust is to provide funds for the development of the Lawrence J. Rin Jr. Memorial Park into an endowment for the future maintenance of said park. And then also three college scholarships. It doesn't say how much.
It says indoor scholarship.
Indoor, yeah, yeah, yeah. But it doesn't say how much, but it doesn't say it couldn't fund it all. So I think, you know, if we pursue this, I think the county, in Jeff's terms, skinning the game, I think it's important that we have some buy-in, you know, and if we're invested in it, and then there's other funds to help basically keep it going and, you know, keep it progressing, you know, I think that's, would be the way to go.
I'd just like to see how much funding they're talking about.
Well, I just told you, there's over four million dollars in loot. Unless he's done something with it, because we, we, we've seen it. I mean, I'm telling you what the man's estate was, it's a public thing, but this is what the old man wanted and he had the cash.
I was going to say Edward Jones is who handled his.
I'm sure Hawthorne's got it now, but Max Fisher had it all.
And we've seen the documents.
So there's four million dollars.
There was 3.2 million at one time.
That, that could be used for this park.
It says the whole thing.
Well, that's, you know, I mean, that was his, his trust. I'm not going to sit here and say I'm the authority, but he had 3.2 in 2001 in CAD. Well, that's just stocks and bonds and Edward Jones stuff. He had close to $700,000 in cash, in like a money market account or whatever.
That's their mark for this trust.
I'm not saying, I don't know how, I'm not an attorney to see how those funds were, but that's what he had. And the old man said, here's my trust and I want this park. So I mean, that, to me, that's what it means, Sam, but I'm not, there's some language in there that gives, gives Hawthorne the authority, you know, so the way it reads to me, but I'm not going to get in and say I'm the expert on that attorney language.
I mean, it's worth pursuing and you'd like to have a conference with Mr. Renfro to, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
Showing the documentation that you've got and say, here's what we're seeing, here's the trust, the trust says the money is supposed to go to them. It doesn't say the money's supposed to go to anybody else. There's, everybody's beneficiaries are been paid off. It says Coal County has a park that makes you a beneficiary.
I think you're, the way I read it, you are the largest beneficiary in the county of Coal, which means there's also language, if I remember right, you have the authority to ask for copies of the tru, the full trust and anything disbursements, it's got language in there of all that stuff. I thought I was a beneficiary, so I asked for a copy of it. He said, well, you're not a beneficiary any longer, you know, because you've been paid. Got your little chunk, you know, nice chunk of change, I'll play you like I didn't. It's right there at $75,000, what he gave me.
If the commission decides to pursue this, we can definitely make this into a park if the funding piece can be answered. That, that was really the only question we had. And then maybe a little bit of, you know, staff being able to take care of it. But if there's a way to help, you know, pay for, you know, some maintenance work, some mowing or things like that, you know, to, to help supplement what we're going to do, I, I think definitely we can, we can make this happen if that's the commission's desire.
You know, if he even, when you think about investments, I know he was over at Primrose, you know, for six, seven years before he passed away. He had enough income, you know, so I, I don't, you know, I don't know exactly how much he had, but he had more than enough to cover that monthly deal. So you're talking six, seven grand a month that I know was coming in and he wasn't feeling any pressure. I don't know, I'm sure it was more than that, but I know he for sure had, would have had that much coming in a month. That's not touching the principal.
I think when he passed away, Primrose owed him a hundred thousand dollars too.
And he had that, everything he said, he said it five times.
He wasn't foolish with his money. And like I said, when I listen to what you guys are saying and read what's reading, it doesn't say where the money goes any other place but to scholarships and the park. It doesn't say money should be here, money should be here and here. It gives you three options, scholarships, donations and park.
He didn't even have the other stuff until, I think it's 2019. It was parked, period.
Obviously, I'm not a lawyer and, you know, maybe you've got lawyers on retention or have them look through. They give you yes or no.
We definitely need to revisit it and talk to the bank, see where they're at with it now. We went from being told, here's some land, y'all make it into a park and stuff, and if you can't, let us know. I mean, if you weren't trying to show your cards, I mean, that's fine, but then it went from, okay, well, we're still not going to show you the cards we hold. And now we, we've got more information, so I think it's worth looking into. It doesn't say it has to be developed into this great big fancy park, you know, right away or asking for a lot of money. I mean, a couple 10,000, $20,000, you can make a couple of trails and put a little gravel out there to get things started and started and then, you know, work on it as you go, build a pavilion out there, some kind of memorial to Mr. Rin. Like I said, even a tribute to veterans, I mean, World War II veteran.
Veterans and maybe the men of agriculture in Coal County.
I know it says you can't sublease it or anything. I know 4H had reached out to me. It was their shooting sports, it wasn't just 4H agriculture or anything like that. But the shooting sports is going to be a difficult thing to try to do out there because it would have had to been closed off to the public for certain things. And that was kind of mentioned in there. He wants it open to everybody, everybody to be able to use it. So I, I think there's definite, definite merit to pursuing this.
Like I said, when Junior passed away, very quickly, so, you know, because him and I and my brother and Mark, we're talking to him all the time about developing, you know, like a nine hole golf range out there, just, you know, something, more ideas of what to do with it. So, and he was, he was good for all of it, not some, you know, he just wants people to be able to use it, use the park. It's what he, that's what the land, land he's got for. He didn't want to sell it. If he, he could have sold it, when he sold the first farm on the left side of the road, he could have sold the one on the right just as easy. But he didn't, he didn't want the money, he wanted to give it to the public. His wife was main involved in the park too, she wanted it as much as he wanted it. So it is supposed to be Lawrence Rin, Mary, I don't know what Mary's middle name was, but Memorial Park, period. You know, like I said, it's, to me, there's three things it says. It says the park, the scholarships, it doesn't, there's no wiff, hand, butts or mazes and doesn't mention anything about selling it. Because he told me and my brother and my sister that he would never sell, sell the land. He didn't need to. So like I said, you know, it's in you guys' hands, I'm not going to badmouth Hawthorne Bank what they're doing, but hey, you know, it is what it is, is, you know, it's in black and white. So, like I said, he was my uncle, so. And I did work for him and yeah, there was a little bit times when I was a young man hauling hay with him, you did exactly what he said if you wanted to survive.
He tough.
But like I said, he was good, you know, last year that he was alive, you couldn't ask for a better father figure or whatever. He was a good man. And if he told you something, it was done. There was no wiff, hand, butts or mazes. He didn't, you know, back up on his word. So, and that's all Mark and I want to do, my brother and my sister, and the rest of the beneficiaries. Just want what the man wants, you know, to honor his memory as like Mark is saying.
I, I want to thank you gentlemen for coming today and it's refreshing to hear the story about Mr. Rin. We, we had a lack of information when we made our decision. I think we should pursue this issue, whether we do it à la legal proceedings, whether we do it in closed session, which we, at some point, and we even thought about that today, if you'll, if you look at our agenda, we had you in here under two places, under, right where we're talking now, and also a potential real estate closed session meeting. We have to live with some sunshine rules, but I'm glad what you have said is now out there.
Sorry, I get excited, you know, you, you struggle with anxiety about some stuff that's passionate too, you know? When I think about how he'd have a boot in my ass for not representing, you know what I mean?
Well, if there would be a few million dollars to help develop this park, that does.
It's a big deal. That's how he wanted to, all his lifetime of work, and he died at, what, 93 years old? He wanted it to be a park. And until just lately, did he add something else as an option? Because I told him, what if you guys don't want it because of liabilities or whatever, you know?
So I'd like to, we may meet in closed session at some point, decide on how to pursue this, but our lines of communication are open. When you talk to two of us at the same time, that's what brings the sunshine statutes into place because two of us make a quorum of the commission. So it's, it's, it's mind boggling that you can't come and say, can I, can I talk to Sam and Jeff at the same time? Well, Sam and Jeff sitting with you at the same time is a meeting that is open to the public unless it's closed via statute. So we'll stay within the.
So the real estate thing would have allowed it to?
Real estate, litigation, you know, legal matters, yes, there's other things that can close it and, but.
So this is leasing property, so that was what I put under closed session. And I know somebody said that I can't put it under closed session. Well, they didn't have any idea exactly what I was talking about, so how can you say, I can't have it under closed session? We can have closed session if two of us say, hey, this is not closed session stuff, then we go back into open session. So that's what's frustrating to me is I got somebody trying to tell me what I can and can't do.
We will have future discussions with you.
Jeff called to tell me that. I don't, it didn't bother me, you know, but it, I, it makes me, you know, a little more anxious, I guess, because I wasn't prepared. I didn't know if I'm going to be facing attorneys, they're going to try to shut me down and interrupt me and, you know what I mean? I didn't, you know, you kind of think about those things, you know what I mean? So it was a little bit of a surprise, but.
I appreciate that.
As far as the information being out there.
The information you gave is, I appreciate that.
Actually, I, I like it being, being able to say, you know, let the public know what's going on, you know? Let their voice be heard, I guess you're with the paper or whatever, if you want, whatever. But I think it's good, you know? Put it out, put it out in the open, that way nobody can go, well, you didn't tell me about this or you, you guys are holding this back on me, you know?
It troubles me when I think about the tru, these trusts, you know, people like Junior trusted these guys, as I say, guys on High Street. And, you know, it's hard to get them held accountable. Once you've turned it over to them and, you know, really, they had a hand in that trust being written. He didn't have a separate attorney looking out for his interest to, to put those what-ifs. The only what-ifs that got added were stuff he and I talked about in a fence row, you know what I mean? And it's simple, just there's no extra stuff. I mean, that troubles me, you know, that nobody really holds those guys accountable. And they made it to where it's easier for them to do what they want to do. And they're really not honoring what that man wanted. So I hope you help hold them accountable basically. When talking to John Landware, to me, it sounded like you should be able to just come back to the table together and work through it. If you, if there's other reasons, fine, but hopefully you guys can just come back to the table and get something going.
Thank you.
I've got your contact information, Mark, and then I guess if we need Gary as well, you can reach out to him or anybody else. If we need anybody else's input on it or support on it, I mean, I.
Like I said, my brother would have been here, but he had, needs to go on vacation today, so. He was, would have spoke the same way.
Thank you.
Thanks for it, ladies. Thanks for hearing us out.
Yep.
Well, thanks for the information.
Okay, and unfinished business.
We've, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I got the order ready for the holidays, the one that you guys approved and want to add back to Florida.
You're wasting time, are you? Don't want us to change our minds.
Right here.
Yeah, I think we already approved it, right?
Yes, you did.
We just have to sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, I was just going to add, we've got closed session on the agenda, so if we want to talk about this in closed session today, or if we want to direct the county attorney or public works to talk to somebody, or what direction you want to head with this, I just don't want it stopping here.
I would like to talk to Dan Rin's room.
Okay, so do you want to talk to him and then we'll put it on the agenda next Tuesday or something again to further discuss, or you want to have all of us here to discuss with him?
I think all of us have to discuss it with him.
I want that under closed because he did have.
We need to read this, the actual.
I think this is maybe too important to just have one of us talk to them.
For what you're doing now.
Leasing, leasing property is under the closed session and that's what I was going under. So we're talking about leasing it, which it was a lease, it was like a 99 year for one dollar lease. So if we're negotiating stuff.
Transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore.
Since the bank already took it to action for legal, I think that you might want to do that in closed, I don't know.
Leasing, purchase or sale of real estate by a public government body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore.
Okay, we could do another possible litigation. What if we're getting ready to sue them for taking this to court without our knowledge of all the information? I mean, you're supposed to be here giving us ideas on how to make this work for us. And all I'm hearing you say is, no, I'm just going to shut down.
I have no problem with that, but I'm going to follow the law.
You had a problem with me putting it on closed session from the start.
Because I didn't think.
And you had no idea what I was even going to talk about in particular. You knew I was going to talk about the Rin Jr. property, but you didn't know exactly what I was going to talk about. I could have been talking about leasing, which is under the closed session.
But it has nothing to do with.
It did work out.
It was a closed session, I appreciate.
It did work out fine, thank you.
I think this was really, this was really good. So now we will pursue it from our end.
We averted any crisis, Mark said he is fine doing an open session, so, okay, it was fine.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks.
There is one more thing that Brian was talking about, emergency purchase.
Oh, yes, 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 we need to.
So Brian, if you want to come.
We need to do this. Yes, thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
I did put it on my.
So this has to do with 308 East High Street location.
I like the idea of the High Street guys.
So, so as you know, we're in the process of relocating the treasurer and auditor over to the 308 East High Street. I went through and I researched different ways to make the communications happen. And I did like a, a small workaround where I've got limited data that's available but no phones. And so I checked with Lumen and, and different entities and the, the best and only route that I could find at this very time is going ahead and getting this circuit put in from Brightspeed that will carry the data and the phones to that location. So we've already got the equipment purchased to make that happen, but I, I need approval and signing of, of the order for the circuit, which Jill has, has reviewed. And it's at a cost of $700 a month, it was at.
Negotiate down from 1,000, 80s.
Yeah, Jeff actually helped me with that, so, so anyway, but, but yeah, it was about, it was about a. It was about 1,100, but now it's, it's, it's 700. So, but in order for me to make this happen as quickly as I can, I need to get, you know, if you want to discuss it, that's fine.
We need to provide internet and telephone for these elected officials.
So anyway, I just ask that, that the order for the new circuit at Bright, for Bright, from Bright Speed for the 308 East High Street location be approved today, so I can get that service installed.
We didn't have this specifically listed on the agenda, but this is an emergency.
Correct, yeah.
We're declaring this an emergency. Okay, I would make a motion to pursue the monthly telephone slash.
Yeah, so it's the data slash voice.
Data slash voice service at 308.
East High Street.
East High for the assessor, I'm sorry, auditor slash treasurer's office. That's my motion, at a cost of $700 per month.
I'm, I'm going to second it, I think we should just have 308 East High Street under own business every week at this point.
Hopefully we're getting close to that.
That's what I said about $12,000 ago.
Thanks Brian, it's a pain.
He seconded it and then he also discussed it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, I didn't want you to vote right away before.
Okay, I have one thing, we had our 250th committee meeting Thursday and we're looking at the living windows, which is Friday, December 6. And we would like to do a Valley Forge encampment and also bring in a conestoga wagon here on the corner in front of the courthouse, so I just.
Who is we?
The 250th birthday committee, whatever 250.
Anniversary committee.
Anniversary committee.
Very good.
So I just, I said.
Do you have a conestoga along with your other six cars?
A what?
I'll bet that link is just about as big as a cow. Anyway, I just.
What is it?
It's a conestoga wagon. That's, that's the wagon at the frontier, you know, they.
You got a couple oxen pulling that thing or you got mules?
Camels, I think, we usually have camels for, for December.
Are they going to have the usual thing they have on the front of the courthouse too? They usually had something up there.
They used to have the Candy Cane House, the News Tribune did that, but when Janet Owsley retired, I don't think they've done that in the last few years.
I know Janet was always one of them.
But I think a conestoga wagon might actually have to go into driveway here, but otherwise we're looking kind of at, at the, at the corner there where we got our monuments and, and all that other stuff. But we'll have some tents and patriots and camp followers and all that thing, so. I just want to let you know we're going to do that. Okay, anything else?
Don't think so.
A motion to stand and assess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're not doing the whole session, are we?
No, I think either Sam's going to talk to Dan or he's going to invite him to the meeting.
I'm going to invite him to attend, so all three of us.